Board of County Commissioners meeting for Crest County will come to order. Let the record show today is May 8th. The time is 9:00 AM. I wonder if Ms. Meredith Nichols, our administrative assistant, would do the honor and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ma'am. Morning, Counselor. How are you, sir?
Which Counselor?
Me. Yeah. Let me look around. You better be the only one we got.
Well, that's marginal.
Yeah. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Flower.
Present.
Commissioner Candor.
Here.
Commissioner Prince. Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
And to the Board, Kelly Camper.
I'll give it up.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Amendments to the agenda, gentlemen?
I have none.
Uh, I... I don't know whether to add it to the agenda or bring it up under Commissioner Items.
Just bring it in. Figuring a hot track.
Yeah, contract for the immunization.
I'd amend it.
So I would move to amend the agenda to add signing contract for public health.
No second.
For the contract for immunization. They moved and seconded to amend the agenda to add under new business, signing or consideration of signing the contract for public health. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote on a favor of amending the agenda. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carried. We'll put that under new business. Immunization contract. Thank you. Appreciate that. And then, that's all I had. Audience introductions.
Jackie Bubus for the Sentinel.
John Carroll, VSO.
Bob Jolly, Airport.
Lethal Green, Airport.
Welcome. Nice to have you. Uh, I don't believe we have any minutes this morning yet to approve, so we'll move on to Commissioner Items. Commissioner Candor, would you like to start?
Not a lot happened since yesterday afternoon at 2:00. It did rain a little bit. I did get... I talked to Kathy Garcia about rescheduling the meeting. I mentioned it to you earlier. And I'll get the new, uh, attendance list for that meeting. I'll tell everybody, make sure. One thing that you all saw that reminded me of that was the Adam Rice's note. Did you read that?
No.
It... He still hadn't gotten his card and he was looking forward to it.
Who was that note to?
It was to all of us. You, me, Tom, you, Jay, and the Senator, and Kathy Garcia.
Why was that?
I don't remember seeing it, but...
It's, uh...
It's very possible. I just don't remember. It was mailed two days ago.
Email?
Yeah.
Hold on, let's look.
So he hadn't gotten his card to the... Credit card, you know, the card that he can reimburse their CenturyLink again, reimbursement through the phone.
Huh.
You don't have it coming up?
I sure didn't see it. Didn't mean I didn't get it. Let me look real quick.
I am too.
I am too. Um... No, I sure don't have it.
Rice. There you go. It was sent on the 6th. Here it is. It's got the Board of, uh... Wait a minute. Board Inquiries, I'm sorry.
Sixth.
No, he didn't send it to... He sent it to, uh... He sent it to the Board Inquiries, CenturyLink, and then Becky and Kathy Garcia.
I don't have that.
I saw Board and I didn't pay any attention to that.
And he sent it to you as well, or...
Yeah, apparently. I got it.
And what is this in regards to?
It's for his reimbursement card for phone service.
Okay. Yep.
Just, you know, if everybody else has got one, I don't know why he's having a problem, but we would have been able to help him on that tomorrow. But I'll talk to Tim this afternoon and see what the deal is on that.
You said you'll help him with it tomorrow?
No, I'll cook this afternoon.
Oh, 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 okay. Gotcha. Misunderstood you. Thanks.
Yeah, I saw Board and I didn't even look at him, so you're just seeing Board.
Okay.
All right, but that's it for today. Move on.
Okay. Um, let's see. So yesterday before I left, Jackie Hobby came in and asked if we, her and I, could quick hammer out a vacancy announcement to send to the newspapers before the deadline on Tuesday, it closed the business. So we did that. It's certainly not your 15-paragraph vacancy announcement. We just wrote one. I can send it to you real quick if you're interested in seeing what we did send.
Fifteen paragraphs?
Well, you read some of these vacancy announcements. By the time they get through telling everybody what they don't have to do. Ridiculous. So, uh...
You didn't put a salary in, did you?
No, I did not. Nope.
When we talk about that, we can discuss that part of this. Salary planning?
No, it's not.
We ought to talk about it if we're going to put an end to it.
It is.
Consideration of salary.
Is that for the clerk?
Planning court position.
Sorry. I am... I pulled up a... An agenda off of my packet and I...
Thought we talked about that, 'cause...
Had two of them and I opened the wrong one. My agenda is not the correct agenda.
We needed to...
Yeah. It's on my... Written, and it's just not on my computer, so sorry. Um, yeah, so we can discuss that today. Um, get reorganized here. I'll send that to you in just a minute. And then, uh... Alyssa Liedinggood brought over two contracts. Obviously, I already mentioned those. Told her I would try to deal with those today. And then I went over and started some demo work and Alyssa and I tore up part of the carpet on the new public health...
New building?
Offices. So we're going to try to get...
How's it going?
Good. We'll try to get things in a situation where we can make a good run at it on the 15th. But yeah, we're going to move, tear out a wall and slide it over, make the exam room bigger, and then build a little partial wall in there to close off the storage area a little more. And we're going to do the carpeting and the painting and...
So what are we going to do before the 15th? Is there anything, because before I leave town, let me go?
Well, I'm going to go there this afternoon.
We've got a small dump truck I could bring.
Yeah, I thought my trailer in was just throw the sheetrock and the carpet on it, and I'll take it out to the land.
Just dump?
Pardon? Now, we'll just... I'll pitch it off my hand. Went by and leaned on the ag teacher. His students are going to go load it for me this afternoon. So after our meeting, our workshop, I'll go over there and get that moving on. So that's what I did yesterday. Commissioner Prince?
I got a notice this morning from Kathy Rice on the letter.
Yes.
Setting up a meeting for Speedlin, asking to set... And just on a comical note, you may have noticed that on this 200 block of West Cliff, they restripped the lanes at more of an angle so that the vehicles can go without ruining around into the opposite lane. So they moved them from this way to that way so longer vehicles could go in upper terrain. But what they failed to notice after they finished painting completely is that when you go like this and go like this, it narrows the lane.
Yeah.
So now it doesn't meet, so we're going to black them all out again.
Ah, no!
All over again.
I noticed that, yes. I think it's there.
Wow.
A little snafu, they'll fix. I just said that is comical, so if anybody West Cliff's watching, we could... We're not going to let them go to...
You know, that's part of the character of West Cliff. It's okay if you do that. It's okay if you kind them longer into the lane and just... That's the tourist. That's okay.
The attorney is really concerned about somebody's truck extending too far. You go out into the oncoming lane and have an accident, we know that's occurring. I'm very concerned that the town of West Cliff will rename Smithville or something. Whoever's in excess.
Did they decide to put a sign up for the big long trucks to park on the side streets?
Yeah. They're going to be banned. In fact, what they have is once the lanes are established to the correct dimensions, they'll have a white line in the back and they're going to put signs up all along saying that if your vehicle extends beyond that, violation occurred. So they're going to start a...
That'd be hard to do.
Probably warnings for the first couple of weeks and then tickets after that. So...
Well, I will go on record, since you're the attorney for the town of West Cliff. I'd like to know this right up front. I have decided that I'm going to solve my own parking issue in the 200 block. And I started with...
Small truck.
Started with the meeting with Congressman Tipton. I parked on the south side of the street and I knew my pickup would extend out into the street, so I ran the right front tire up onto the sidewalk. And I'm going to continue to do that until I get a ticket.
And you will eventually.
And then I'll come in here and raise hell with the Commissioner. Yeah, I'll say...
I was just adding a little levity to it.
Yeah. I thought somebody would say something to me that day we met with Congressman Tipton. Nobody did, but it makes a significant difference. And so if I am not obstructed by a trash can or tree, that's the deal. I'll end up with bent rims someday, but...
At any rate.
How hungry are you?
I guess the bottom line is I really didn't do anything since yesterday morning, but I wanted to say something, so there it is.
There you go. Perfect. Well, I'll bet you that...
This is not a contest, Jay.
I understand.
So I like the...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, and we talked about Upper Ark. I'll just reiterate today that I will be attending that meeting on tomorrow. That's a regular monthly meeting. I will go to that and then I'll also attend that.
You get the...
On the 29th.
My forwarded maps?
Yes, I did. Yeah, thank you.
So... I was confused then. Please help me. Tomorrow is the regular meeting, not the...
That's correct. 29th.
29th is the blue line.
Yeah.
Anything else on Upper Ark?
No. Okay. Attorney items? I'll bet he's done a lot.
I have. Yesterday, I talked about the letter I'd sent to the Executive Director of the Medical Center. I still haven't gotten any response or contact. I'm not going to push that for right now. I can... We can interpret it a couple of ways. Either she's seeking legal advice before she responds, or they're just going to accept it and we don't have an issue here, so I'll wait on that a little bit. I wasn't sure from our meeting yesterday, after we talked about the proposed contract with Riley Johnson, who was going to take the initiative to contact Shannon.
We never really did.
But I did contact Shannon and told him that we were going to have a workshop and he wanted to know who should organize. And I told him to coordinate with Meredith to find a date that we'd work for everybody and get that set up as soon as possible. The other thing I asked him, because to me what's more important than some of the language in there is the working relationship Riley Johnson has had. And I asked him, because they... I know he went to Rio Blanco County Meeker and talked to them, and he went down to Alamosa and talked to them. And he said those folks had nothing but praise for Riley Johnson as far as being able to work with him and being very accommodating and attentive to whatever the needs were. So I think we got a very good choice here for an article.
I... Quinn and I ran each other in the hall and I volunteered to help.
Yeah, for a point of contact, it seems logical, because since Bill's had so much experience doing this from here on out on those kinds of questions, they should contact you for legal issues if there are any. They'll still talk to me. And then finally, on... I know all of you have been getting some emails from Mr. Howard and...
Really?
And if you get anything, please let me know. I mean, I... Yeah, because I knew he would start up again.
I'm going to forward them to you. You're collecting them?
Yeah, I do. I collect them because at some point I may have to take some legal action again.
See here.
Especially after all of you have... And I know that all of you should do what Tom has done and what Shannon did, is just tell him, please take your name off his email list. You don't want to receive any more messages. So I would say do that and send me a copy of that. And then if he keeps on doing it, I may consider seeking some sort of a injunction.
Harassment.
Well, not harassment so much as an injunction, which is, I guess, based on the constant harassment of unwanted emails.
Pitch them.
And that's fine, because I know you've got the same ones that they've gotten so far. But I'm still monitoring it. I think most of his attention is still focused on Fremont County, but he's starting to sneak back in here again, which I expected. So that's where we're at. And that's all I had to talk about.
Okay.
If Fremont would just buy him that Hummer.
Yeah, getting that, you know, Humvee.
And, you know...
Armor plated. You need an armor plated one.
I mean, seriously. You know, then he would leave us all alone.
Put a nice big decal on the side of it. Crazy man driving.
Yeah. The last two just didn't even really make sense to me. Of course, I've not been in the loop either, but it's like, we're short anymore. What are you talking about?
Don't read them. Just send them to me, so...
I started reading and I didn't... I do have one here I'll forward to you, but he... I think he put it to me separately because he left me off his big list.
Yeah, I had seen you...
I'll send that to you.
Okay. I talked to Kay over in the court yesterday. See if he's still bothering them. He seems to have moved on, filing stuff anymore with them.
Okay. All right. Good. Anything else, sir?
No, that's it.
Great, thank you. We want Admin Assistant. Anything, ma'am? Thank you. Public comment. Hearing none, we'll move on. Staff reports. Erapuerto, welcome.
Good morning.
Good day, Bob.
Good morning, sir. How are you?
Good morning, Mr. John.
Before I do anything, I'll put my glasses on.
I had to go home and get mine. I forgot them again this morning.
In April, we only sold about 100 gallons of fuel. Weather has not been real cooperative with us. Right now, our inventory's at 2271. And I lowered our fuel price to 443, keeping up with the neighbors. Fremont's at 440, Pueblo's at 439, and Center's at 440. So I lowered ours to 443.
Walsenburg, what for now?
Down to 3, I think.
You know what the price is down Walsenburg?
At 3. 390. Somewhere around there.
This question for me. Does airplane fuel fluctuate?
Yes.
Well, I know that, but I mean in conjunction with like automobile fuel. I noticed that.
Nope.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Automobile fuel is going up.
I knew that.
And aviation fuel is going down.
Okay, thank you.
Right now, if we were to buy a load, it costs 378. And it was up to about $4, so it's gone down significantly.
Thank you. I just didn't know there's a correlation.
This month, we had a problem with one of our gates and one of our patrons couldn't get out of the airport because the electricity went off. So I told him, use the other gate. So he used the other gate and it opened fine, which means the battery was dead on that gate, which is the back battery when electricity goes out.
Where is the battery? Is it in that box?
It's in the box.
Not a big battery?
No, it's got two batteries in there.
Oh.
And you wouldn't believe the price of them. I just bought four. They're $17.50. So 35 bucks a box. And I looked in the owner's manual and they're supposed to last three years. It's been in there seven years, so we got our money.
Damn! Fix that! Pay double for that.
So anyway, we did get those done. We also got the parking spot for big corporate jets when they fly in. We got that painted.
Got that painted, now finally fit.
Yep. Got some signs put up. Got one at the end of the, uh, our parking ramp that tells people not to park their cars there, and if they do, they're going to be hauled off.
That reminds me, I'll forward to you two and Longdon, including Tom and Jay on the U-Plan view that Armstrong did of the ramp, based on the wingspan of the biggest 900 Falcon, which is what they have. The ramp spans longer than what the standard one is. And so it'll be a little bit more asphalt, but it'll give you a good feel for the... And they trace the taxi... The wingspan trace as it taxis. Very useful.
Okay. And I will also put up a...
Hazard.
A sign where all the public parks or their cars, letting them know that if it doesn't have a current registration, it'd be towed off.
Good plan.
So I got those things done. Got a, uh, a new windsock put up and got filter changed on our, uh, fuel system. And I got our noticed airman list updated. And I sent you all a copy of our proposed special use permit and wanted to know if you needed anything changed or wanted anything changed, or if it's good to go.
Start it through it. I haven't been...
I would assume we need to put that on an agenda item. I would assume you probably wouldn't prefer it to be on the agenda item at Wetmore meeting.
No.
So we could do it up here.
But the people in Wetmore always ask about it.
Yeah, they ask every time we go down there.
Tell them to...
Yeah, tell them to have lunch.
Shall we consider... Shall we consider the SUP at the May 31st meeting?
Yeah, that'd be a good time, actually.
Sure, sure. Okay. Meredith, would you mind putting that on the agenda under new business?
You doing any planning for Memorial Day out there? Got to advertise anything for...
Not for it.
Run a Memorial Day special on gas or something. Do something, just something to get in the paper or something, because there are going to be a people... A lot of people here that aren't normal here.
Yeah, we could do that. We've had a lot of... We've had a lot of traffic at the airport. We haven't had a lot of fuel sales because most of the traffic that's been coming in is corporate jets and twin turbos.
Organize and get that.
Yes, yeah. If we had had Jet A... I had two calls during the month about, do you have Jet A? Do you have Jet A? Well, we've got to stop here. We've got to stop there and get fuel and...
I had a question, just out of curiosity. On those big jets, do you have some piece of equipment where you can move them around or can...
No.
Do they taxi everywhere? They need... They can turn around and do everything?
Yes. Yeah, just curious. Yep.
Because they may come in all the...
I have two questions. One is, you haven't heard any disaster stories about the fuel dispenser? Is that thing working okay?
It is working like a champ.
Perfect. And the second one is the broken cement in front of the... Where the fire truck is, is that still in progress of getting repaired?
Uh, I haven't talked to the fire department lately. Last time we talked to them was about a month ago. And they are well aware that it is a problem, so... Uh, I did notice they got a new compressor on their fire truck. You know, we're having problems with the water leaking all the time. So they got a new compressor to keep that system working, to keep it from leaking, but that compressor runs...
Really?
A lot. I mean...
Is it on the truck?
Yes.
Yeah.
And they keep the truck plugged in, so I'm keeping a little bit of an eye on our electric bill because with that thing running 24/7...
It's plugged in. It's...
Yes.
Yeah, maybe would you mind shooting them a little letter, drafting up an email or something and raise those two concerns? Are you... What's the plan for the concrete and that you've noticed that compressor runs a lot? I don't... I don't get why a compressor on that truck would run.
And it recycles the water through the valve that's having a problem, something.
Yeah.
Have to ask him.
I...
I want to talk to Kit about it.
I go out to the... A lot and...
Who'll be at the workshop tonight?
With the exception of once, that compressor's been running every time I've ever been at the airport.
They were also asking if you wanted to partner in a compressor. Did they ever follow through with that?
No.
I don't know if it was for that as a standalone or whether...
It was... It was for that.
It was?
And we'd have... We'd happily...
I know, that's why I was talking. I don't know why they didn't follow up.
I don't know.
But a cheaper way of doing it than what they've got going with that truck.
Yeah, when they went to, uh... When they went to Denver to get that truck repaired or wherever they took it to, they installed one onboard and they put an electrical plug on the fender where they just plug it into the fender and the compressor runs.
Well, you know, if it's running a lot, it means it's kind of... Doesn't have a very big tank on it.
Yeah.
And so it's going to... So maybe... We'll talk to Kit about it. Maybe they're still... They could save money and we could... Or we can get share a bigger compressor on the ground.
Yeah, you could add something in the email and you got a record of it as well.
Yeah, okay. And I'll send you all a copy. I mean, I'll copy all on the email. And that's about it for the airport. Other than I did get a price update this morning and fuel, or our price for fuel has gone down another nine cents. Right now, it's 378 for...
That's good.
For our... If we were to buy a load today. For our, if we were to buy a load today. So, it's been going down steadily.
Um, what's the status of the insurance on the cars?
We're, we're working on that. Um, Jim Van Busskerk made some contacts yesterday.
Talked to progressive?
Uh, I should talk to several different ones. I think progressive might have been one of them. He talked to the Salida before, who they have in several courtesy parts on who they use, so.
Yeah.
We are pushing that.
Good if you could get it before Memorial Day, that may.
That would be nice. That'd be nice if we could get it before Memorial Day. So, we'll keep pressing on that issue. And that's about it, gentlemen?
Thank you, appreciate it.
Next time, bring.
Thanks for coming in.
Apple fritters, Bob.
Yeah, okay.
Come out and bring to you.
I'm assuming we're on an annual schedule now for a meeting out there, is that?
I hope so.
Yeah.
I thought our last one went real well.
Good, good. All right, thank you guys, appreciate it.
Those carburetors look good and we really appreciate it.
It was nice.
Yeah, it was, it was fine, great.
Yeah, it was good.
You can bring those next month.
Next time, it'll be steak.
Yeah, there you go.
Whoa!
See you guys.
Put that in the paper, that's all.
Next time, VSO, Mr. John, how are you this morning, sir? Good.
John, looking real, real sharp today in your.
Yeah, well, I'm not wearing a suit. That's, that's just not going to happen on a regular basis.
Tim always came in wearing a suit.
Yeah, sure.
Never caught him without a tie, did you?
Uh-huh. Yeah, you can pull the wool over my eyes. All right, so, uh, month of April, uh, 19 calls, 31 office visits. Um, I did have three home visits, one of which was for a Vietnam era veteran uh, who, uh, very low income, had a stroke recently and was completely out of water in his cistern. And I was able to coordinate with our, one of our water delivery guys and got him some water. And I am apparently now an official member of the Bunker Hills Boys. So, I'm not sure what that means, but.
Yeah.
Look out for the sheriff.
Wait and see, huh?
As he came in and brought me brand-new hats, so.
Wow.
Interesting guy. He, he said he wanted to pay me in Civil War, uh, money. So.
Two dollars, you'll get a cup of coffee.
Yeah, I know. He said he had a, a Connex full of Civil War money.
Mean Confederate money or?
Confederate, yeah.
Might be more than our money.
I'm, I'm not sure. He, he is a character. I don't know if you guys have met Dan Cherry?
Met him, no, I'm aware of him.
Yeah, he's the guy that wanders around in Civil War uniforms both sides.
Oh, yeah, I have seen him.
Yeah.
Just a question before you get too far.
Yes, sir.
Veteran that needed water. I know you do this, but are you working with, um, Public Health, excuse me, um, Tom to Human Services to hook up with that because?
I did, because, um, with his stroke, he was, his living conditions were, uh, very bad. I mean, it was, it was kind of scary. Um, even his water tank, the, the guy that delivered, delivered the water was like, are you sure you want me to put water in this thing? But his well ran dry and so he's, can't flush his toilet and stuff like that. Just no.
Well, thanks, appreciate you doing that.
Um, two community events. One was the health fair, the other one was the, uh, Pueblo Vet Center. I had, uh, a meeting with John Durant, brought him up at, uh, Wednesday, the 25th. Had about eight people in attendance. He was talking about the services that, uh, Pueblo Vet Center can provide and hopefully bring up here uh, because they have a VA motorhome that they can use for counseling services and things like that. Um, so hopefully we'll be able to work more with him in the future.
Bless you.
Um, thank you. Lots of different forms. I did, um, the Veterans Trust Fund, uh, we did our last dispersion a couple of weeks ago, uh, and we were out of money until the next fiscal year. Have, had a lot of requests for the VTF, but, uh, and then James is going to be trying to request even more money than we got this year and.
That's October and they're on, right?
Yeah. Um, we do have a lot of, uh, food in our food bank for the Veterans Trust Fund, so, um, I'm giving that out to anybody that is, is asking for food. Um, Memorial Day, uh, everyone is invited. Uh, the American Legion is putting on the same thing as uh, they usually do again at the Silver Cliff Park. Uh, I'll be the master of ceremonies this year.
They didn't ask for a RSVP, but.
I, yeah, I don't.
And I'll be there.
Okay, um, I'll check with Bob and, and see if, if he's sending out RSVPs, uh, later.
We got it formal, but it was a separate sheet.
Okay.
I would have thought of.
Let me see.
10:30.
Yeah, I think it's a 10.
10, 10 o'clock.
I'll have, I'd have to double-check on that one. I haven't even written my speech yet, so.
10 o'clock.
Um, on two weeks ago, I attended training in Pueblo, uh, for the new appeals process. Um, there are, back in February, they, they changed the appeals process, so Roger Watkins and I attended a day-long class on that, so, um, I've been actually holding off appeals because of, uh, that training. So, I've got new appeals coming in. We're starting all those. Been working on a bunch this week. Remind her again, I'll be gone for training, uh, June 2nd through 8th in Cleveland for my national accreditation. Uh, there's a state training conference that I'll be attending in August, uh, and I'll get the dates on that later. Um, June 7th, I won't be here, uh, but there'll be American Legion representatives and VFW reps there. But the Colorado Board of Veterans Affairs, uh, from 9 to 12 will be at Ranchers Roost conducting their monthly meeting. And that's, uh, you know, National Guard and Air National Guard and all the high, high-up people in the CDVA will be there for their regular meeting, so. I wish that I could have been there for that one because that's an important meeting, but, uh, I will have, uh, my officers from the Legion there, so. And budget-wise, $62.92 in office supplies and then I'm assuming that the expenses, the $120 was for, uh, building materials for my, my new wall.
Should not have been, but that doesn't mean that it didn't get there. I don't know if, um, Ms. Meredith, can we look into that? I'll forward you this document. Uh, you don't know of any other expenses you would have had, so.
Not, not for the $120.
Got posted to VSO, that work over there shouldn't have been.
Okay.
Should have been to building and maintenance.
That was the only thing on my monthly budget that I was like, eh, must be the wall. Yeah, it hasn't been painted.
Yeah.
He's been working on sanding the.
Chris was supposed to start that this week.
Yeah, he was, he's been in the last couple of days sanding lightly.
Big mess or not, usually it's kind of.
Really? You like your wall?
Issues.
I think it's going to work well. I mean, you know, it, it is a really needed thing because if anybody's having a meeting.
You can hear it, see it.
It's a two-way glass door. I mean, you might as well not even have a door there. I mean, it's, it is better than nothing, but I, I do appreciate having that wall.
Uh, Meredith, that was for $120.35, so, uh, I don't know how that got posted or what manner it got posted, so we'll follow up on that, but that shouldn't go against your budget, that's building and maintenance.
Okay. And that is all I've got right now.
Good, um, questions, gentlemen?
Go ahead, move that one, accept the VSO report for the 2019.
No, second half.
Second, approve the Veterans, uh, Service Office Report. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, close nay.
It is interesting, uh, I, I definitely get the veterans in that are just coming in to meet me and kind of feel out who I am.
Good.
You winning?
I think so. I've, it's the combat vets that come in with that thousand-yard stare and, and the glare and, uh, I'm winning.
Good, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
With the board's consent, ma'am, be excused for just a couple of minutes. All right.
Wait, recess, sorry.
We're trying to soak in your pep, huh?
Pardon?
Soak in your pep, huh?
The sofas in his car.
Meeting will resume. Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate your patience. Um, next staff report is extension. Good morning.
Hi, hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, good.
You see ya.
Good to you.
My name is Steve.
Here you, here you been busy.
Oh, trying.
Love your first, first three words. I'm happy to. That always makes me feel good when I see that.
I try to switch up the intro every, every report because you guys could just gloss over it, so I gotta keep you on your toes. Yeah. So, uh, um, did you have any questions about what I submitted? I feel like 4H is well underway and keep trying to slowly add to stuff every month, so someday I'm sure I'll be up to here, but um, things are going well and I think, um, trying to just support all the aspects of 4H right now and, and build that out, which is kind of fun.
Good.
Yeah.
Good, uh, did we have any luck on a date for the weed tour?
No, that is something, um, still got to just secure. Um, I, I was curious how that usually works. I know we talked about lunch at the weed board meeting. Um, so I was like, well, if, if I'm the only one available, should I just move forward? Does the weed board want to be a participant in that?
Yeah, you know, we meet on the 21st. I was just looking to double-check that date. Maybe we ought to hold off and we'll just make a decision that day.
Okay.
It looks like it's going to be further down the calendar than normal. I mean, than we originally expected. Not normal because there ain't, ain't normal.
Yeah.
But, uh, yeah, maybe we ought to just talk about it then, pick a date and live with it. Last year, we did do a, a little lunch. We brought in Subway sandwiches. We met in the courtroom, uh, had a little presentation and then, uh, ate lunch. No, let's see. I think we had a presentation, went on the tour, came back and ate lunch, but we might have eaten lunch before we went. I can't remember for sure. But, you know, that's the other thing, when you talk about it, that weed board, I mean, we get 20 or 30 people there. I'm not sure. We, our budget is spring for sandwiches for that many people, so maybe we meet, have a little pastry, refreshment, fruit thing and then go and call it good.
Yeah. They can, we can ask them to bring a sack lunch or something, but that's easy.
Yeah, yeah, so I would suggest maybe we hold off till.
Okay, that's fine. Uh, we tour.
And your little gals all got certified at their food safety?
She's, she said that they were the best, like the highest passing success rate.
So, they, you said above the average rates?
Yeah, yeah, I think the lowest score was an 88 and we got done an hour early, so I think people are just like. So, you can feel good purchasing stuff at the farmer's market because all those ladies know their stuff.
Won't run any problem.
Yeah, yeah, no food poisoning. Uh, yeah, um, so that was great and, um, we're trying to secure a canning class for the fall. Um, just trying to meet those kinds of timing of how people do stuff, so look for that. Uh, I'm working on putting out some sort of, here's our calendar of events, um, so hopefully we'll get that together soon.
Things settled down on the rifle team front?
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know what you mean.
The, um, what was it, uh, you had a problem?
That was the whole shooting sports.
Shooting sports for 4H issue.
Seems like it's going alright.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Plenty of kids doing it.
Oh, yeah, it's, um, I think there's 10 total. Um, there's rifle, there's, uh, trap and then Western Heritage, which is where the kids like really develop this old-time Western persona. They act that out and stuff like that. And that's, uh, we've had, we have three participants this year and so uh, that's kind of exciting. They're really getting into it and, uh, yeah, I think, uh, shooting sports is pretty interesting. It teaches a lot of good skills that you wouldn't think that gun safety would. Yeah, yeah, it's like responsibility, respect, all that kind of stuff. I like it. So, yeah. Um, a couple of times ago, I had talked to you about a venue. West Cliff Town Hall came and talked to me and they have said, come use our downstairs at Town Hall anytime for 4H activities. No animals, unfortunately, but it is ADA accessible, so that is really great. Um, so I think we actually have shooting sports scheduled. They're not going to bring guns, but, uh, they're going to do something down there on Friday because it's supposed to snow, but it doesn't really look like it, so trying to work those out. Um, yeah. I talked to Justin Crawl yesterday. We're going to do a fishing for, with 4H, um, on the 7th of June and he's going to bring out some fishing pools and stuff like that and just get kids kind of outside and loving where they live, so that's step one.
Excellent.
Um, I have had a lot of calls about pinion beetle. Uh, it's kind of one of those ipps beetles and it's affecting all of Colorado, but specifically all the pinions here. So, if you guys hear of anything, it does become a fire hazard eventually, so that's kind of wrapping into all this emergency preparedness that we're looking at, but apparently their, Custer County has a lot of acreage and it just continues to grow every year. Certainly stressed by drought. It's not a death sentence for the trees, but they do turn orange, unfortunately. Went out on a property yesterday and it does not look good, so just, uh.
What part of the county did you go in yesterday?
Fremont, uh, right at the line of copper gold, um, yeah, in Beckwith Ranch, so. And then someone from Bear Basin came in with, with a very sad-looking branch, so just something on your radar if you hear that and see that. Um, and then otherwise, CSU's fiscal year ends in June, so June 30th, so just doing some fun budgetary, blah, stuff like that, which is actually not fun, but, you know, necessary, so. That's kind of all I've been up to.
Good, excellent. Yes, ma'am, question?
Seed potatoes? Oh, yeah, I apparently, uh, I missed that this year, so unfortunately, I know, I'm so sorry. That was the one thing that I was so.
The only thing anyone cared about, seed potatoes.
I know, I feel like a bad extension agent, so, but it is definitely, um, I got on the list.
On your list for next year.
Yes, and hopefully people will forgive me for this.
Probably won't start between now and then.
Yeah, yeah, right?
Times your extension advisor committee meeting on the 21st?
4/15, is that right, Kelly?
I think that is.
Yeah.
And we're at.
We've usually been meeting here in the courthouse, but, uh, we might move it over to West Cliff, whatever works for you guys.
We've got that VSO office walled off, so there's a little more privacy too, so I think that'll be a.
Okay.
And also a meeting place.
I will send out an email.
4/15, you said?
Yep.
Okay.
To meet. Okay.
Well, good. I'm excited about all the stuff you're involved in. It's great to have people coming in to the office and stuff, so.
Yeah, definitely. It's good. Feel useful.
Good, yeah. Anything, oh, I had a question for you about the pickup fundraiser, the truck.
Oh, yeah.
How do you, what's your share of the proceeds today?
So, if we, if we meet $7,000 in revenue, we get half. And then every $500 in addition that we raise, we get that $500? I'd have to look at the paper, but essentially with all.
In ticket sales, you're talking about. So, if you sell $7,000 worth of raffle tickets, you get?
Yeah.
$3,500.
Yeah, which is pretty good. And we got the truck for the week of the 4th of July, so I'm going to put it in the 4th of July parade. And then it's somewhere else for, uh, the fair, but we can call Canyon City and get like another truck up here and, um, Janet Freberg has agreed to sell tickets out of her little, um.
Booth, food booth concession thing.
Good, yeah.
Good, good.
Yeah, you looking for a new truck, Tom?
Nope. I'll support it, but I do not.
Yeah, right?
Do not need another truck.
I don't know if I can enter, but I could take a truck.
Oh, well, then I'll, if I win, I'll give it to you.
Okay, you, it's recorded, right? It's on record.
Yeah, it's on record, that's right. And you have witnesses.
Yeah, right?
One time in my life, yeah, so. All right, ma'am, very good. Thank you. Everything else going okay?
Yeah.
Kids doing good?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, if they would just not be sick sometime, that would be really great.
It's tough, isn't it?
It's like constant.
Well, need anything, give us a holler.
Hey, thanks.
All right.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, there you go.
Nice to see you.
Take care.
Take care.
Having fun.
I will.
Let's work if it's not a little bit fun. Thanks, guys. Department guys, we're with Donna and I've called her.
Okay.
If you want to.
Yeah, if we, if you guys need a break, take a little break. We'll stand in recess.
Come on, man.
Oh, sorry. Did you hang up the phone or did you? Now we'll call the meeting back. There we go. Good morning.
I need a mirror. Can start basketball team.
Yeah, basketball team, that's right. How are you?
Not bad. How about you? Mm-hmm.
She's going to make some more, Shannon.
I'll make some for you.
That's you. That's you I'd given Tom his yesterday afternoon, so. Thanks. Thanks.
Um, I got a question I have for you. Uh, do you, or would you be available to come back in during new business when we discuss salary for planning zoning clerk?
Yeah, Jackie asked me if I would come, so I've got paperwork that I could share.
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you. Should have asked you yesterday, but my afternoon got out of control in a hurry. Um, what do you think? Good?
Yeah, just normal.
Normal business?
Just normal.
Cruising riders?
Yeah, just.
I don't know how we respond if you said, well, we're below normal or we're above normal.
Well, yeah, I, I would have told, I would have sent a piece of paper that said, don't ask that question.
Let's see, this is, uh, May. June is the middle of the year. Maybe, uh, we ought to have a little budget shop workshop or something, just to see how each fund is, or not fund, but organizations tracking against what they propose their budget is.
And most everybody looked like they were at about 33%.
Thought that.
On there.
Wondered if, uh, you know, then, then it's time to start thinking, is there anything special project-wise or it looked like there's something we're going to need a chunk of change for? We would talk about, you know, if it, if there is such a thing.
On there.
Moving funds back and forth while we've got an opportunity to do it.
On there, but, yeah, if.
If, I mean, unless it's looking like everybody's fine.
Um, you know, I've not noticed anything, um.
Yeah, these percentages will give you somewhere.
They're pretty good, but.
Where they're at, but.
But they, uh, sometimes what, you know, one, a percentage for the year is one thing, but then it's, you know, when you, there's some organizations that like, um, we don't even get our budget, the money comes in in clumps. Uh, we also spend it sometimes, you know, you're flat for a while and all of a sudden.
On there, and see, and the beginning, January is a bad year because all those premiums and everyone's in, their dues and, and it is devastating. But they seem to have balanced back out.
To think about, maybe we could ask, send a note out just from you to each organization and say, how, how you think your budget is tracking, not, not that you spent less.
Um, and, and I would prefer if it came from you because I'm on there, I'm not, I, I don't get to tell them if they're being budget-wise or, or not.
No, no, but I would.
You know, that if it's a workshop or. On there.
Something to think about.
Okay, but, no, absolutely. Okay, but, no, absolutely.
Yeah, I didn't see anything that was...
Yeah, nothing jumped out at happening. But you know, that is something that we, we need to discuss of how people, but you know, we just can't have ten thousand dollar pots in everybody's budget for a project. But, you know, if I had like fifty grand in grounds, but it, it just, I don't have enough...
Right, well...
To cover all those and then the tracking, you know, but that's something that we, you know, if somebody has a great idea, I'm on board. I just don't know what the answer is.
Yeah, I think uh, as Commissioner Canada indicated, if somebody knew next year, let's say for example, we're gonna remodel the VSO office completely. But we need to know about that ahead of time, obviously. It may not happen, but at least we could have that discussion.
You know, rugs throughout the building or rugs outside, you know, something that we're, you know, we could designate that in the...
And may I rabbit trail for just a minute since you brought up the real subject of rugs? We had talked about, just in our office discussion about contracting with a, a service to replace these uh, hall rugs once in a while. That one in the foyer on the east side of the building is gnarly this morning.
New method laundry?
New method laundry, yeah. Uh, do you remember it was...
Twelve dollars a rug.
Twelve dollars a rug per month, probably do that once a month. I would imagine we're looking at five, one, two, three, four, for sure four. There's one over in planning and zoning, correct?
Pardon? They just come replace it?
Yeah, they just pick them up, drop new ones down and...
Yeah, so, well, they clean them and then while he has them, they bring a rug, so that there is one, so you swap them out.
There's one over in planning and zoning, three in this hallway.
We have one in our office in front of our counter table.
So, we'll be five, so uh, I think we oughta at least look into that.
Six dollars?
Yeah. I don't know if you noticed the smell off of that one in the east, any time after we get some moisture out from the kids. And that's a brand new rug, we just replaced it this summer, or this spring. So it's already fairly aromatic, so I'd like to pursue that if that's alright with you gentlemen. Miss Meredith will make a note of that and we'll follow up.
It's taking sixty dollars a month to do that.
Yeah.
That would probably help Stephanie too. Well, yeah, and if it doesn't break the vacuum, because the rugs were kept better than we didn't, so it's saved in the long run on that one.
Motion, I think we do that?
Sure, let's do it.
So I move that we authorize up to seventy-five dollars a month um, for carpet ser, rug service within the county buildings. And if it exceeds, that's my motion. So there's a second?
I'll second it.
Arrest that as if it, if it actually turned out to be higher than that, we'll come back and revisit it. So it was sixty a month? Yeah, I said seventy-five in case there's a rug or two with sixty.
Right, we might be missing one.
That's why I said that.
So we moved and seconded to authorize uh, the expenditure of up to seventy-five dollars a month for uh, hall rug maintenance, cleaning.
And then that, out of grounds and building two oh eight?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, so you said, you just said hall, not the, the, one sentence before that, it was the county building rugs.
Well, this is county building, so it'd be the east.
Is it the hallway or is it like this room?
No, 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 the hallway, traffic room.
Those runners.
Okay, the runners, that's it, okay. Let's try to...
Not carpet. Yeah, just the runners.
Okay, yeah, okay, that makes more sense, cause if it was the carpet, it'd be more than that.
I, I agree.
Yeah, okay.
It'd be nice to do the carpet once in a while.
Further discussion?
Once a year?
Once a year would be a good...
Well, we did try cleaning the DHS carpet, it helped, but certainly wasn't adequate, so we probably need to have that professionally cleaned.
Yeah, that'd be down to...
Further discussion, hearing them, see the vote, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay, motion carries. Thank you, sorry, but when you mentioned that rug thing, I thought, ah, so...
Then I'll code it where?
Okay, yeah, two oh eight.
And Roden Bridge used to do that, because of the grease.
Right.
That they couldn't, yeah.
Yeah.
On there.
I would assume they probably have a contract on shop rags, but I don't know, I'm...
Yeah, I, nobody's asked me, so I didn't look, so...
Anything else ma'am?
No, good.
Okay, we'll see you in a little bit hon, thank you for coming back for that.
Alright, you're welcome.
That would be valuable.
I'll talk to you about a process maybe.
Okay, something to, yeah, absolutely.
Decide what we want to do.
Okay, perfect, thanks.
Just a quick review of how...
Oh, 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 yeah, sorry. Okay, uh... Are we ready to adjourn gentlemen?
Is there, are we taking another break?
Should we take another break? IT, come forward there, didn't see you there. How are you?
Good morning, how, how you doing?
I was hiding behind a molecule there.
It's a big molecule.
Yeah, exactly.
We call them tornadoes, hurricanes, cyclones, but hey, whatever. How are you?
Yes indeed, I am well, thank you.
Good, good, you're, have now officially two offices, so you got more space.
Well, yeah, exactly. Just expanding out into some, some uncharted space before, so...
Spreading out, that's right.
It's in, it's actually in here somewhere as a remodel.
Questions gentlemen?
Criminal justice information system, that's pretty long term for...
Uh, I got a uh, next level CGS certification to work with the nine one one system and, and uh, and the assorted, and the assorted software involved with that, so. That was exciting, nice long test for it, so.
So...
You sir?
I can, yes. Um, you know, we're gonna be vacating, um, the public health nurse is gonna be moving. Um, and the, we are providing to the clinic.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, is it fiber or is it broadband, what do we...
What I'm doing is I am beaming high speed internet through a uh, it's called a nano bridge, point to point bridge. And they have, I've limited them to about forty megabytes a second, so. They've been testing it over the last few weeks and they're actually doing the cut over, the final cut over today, so.
Is there an expense to the county for that?
I put everything, all the equipment on last year's budget and um, it's, it's basically, it doesn't affect us at all. We, we paid for it last year, and so...
A lot of monthly fee or reoccurring?
Um, no.
What I'm trying to say is, I'm delighted to help the clinic as much as we possibly can, but if there was an expense, it'd be appropriate for us to get reimbursed, I would think.
Understood, yes.
Yeah, if it's not the case, that's great.
So it would be if you hadn't had the stuff before.
If I hadn't, if I hadn't bought the stuff last year, cause this has been an ongoing project to, to get it set up.
But more than last year and this year was the fact of you were shooting a beam over there for public health, correct?
Yes, we started with public health and that was successful, so when we branched out to uh, work with the clinic. Now, the clinic is um, it's been talked about publicly, so I'll, I can talk about it now. The clinic has signed an agreement with CenturyLink to run fiber from the street over here to tunnel fiber up to their building. It should be an operational by um, August first. What's that? Yeah, it's, this is just recent, this is, uh, they signed the agreement two weeks ago. Um, so they have uh, so they're gonna be getting two hundred megabytes a second through, through regular fiber. And um, so ours is just an interim support while they, while they do this changeover.
So...
Getting to the new building?
Community working together. The town of West Cliff, I ran a CCOM test last night on their internet services, one point nine, I mean, a dismal.
Mm-hmm.
Is it possible, if, if West Cliff chose to pay for and buy the equipment, is it possible to beam over to them with, just being beamed over to the clinic? And if it is, would it adversely affect the county? I'm just trying to say as a community, my effort to try and help the town hall, if that's a possibility?
You know, it, it is definitely a possibility. Um, it would put, it would put a strain on, on us in, in general, and me in particular, to, to make certain that the uh, that the equipment is, is maintained properly. Um, they, if they're getting one point four, they're probably paying thirty dollars a month. If they were to bump up their, uh, we ran on it, we ran on CCOM for, for a good, more than a year, at forty megabytes a second. Between forty and thirty-five megabytes a second. And it would cost us a hundred and fifty dollars a month. So if they wanted to jump up uh, with CCOM, they could, they could actually do that.
Okay, so probably their choice not to move up was opposed, okay.
And, 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 and also there is fiber available in Main Street.
Okay.
Yeah, so if they wanted to, if they wanted to do that, um...
They have choice, that's all I care, I didn't know if they had a choice or not and...
And, and I will do that if that's what you would like me to do, or if you feel that that's, that's necessary.
They can decide whether they wanted or not to have it available, that's great. I was concerned it wasn't available, this might be an option for them, but no, I, that's, I'm good.
I, I understand.
Thank you for that answer.
Okay.
So the question I had along that line is, since our public health nurse is moving out of the clinic and going up the street, can you beam one over?
Yes, I can.
We were talking, pretty good pole out there.
I've got the equipment to do that, I did a site survey, from the corner of that building to the, I can see the top thirty feet of the tower here in our area. So I could beam, and it's only approximately three quarters of a mile. They have a, they have a nominally nine mile range, optimally three mile range. So we can, we can do a, we can do a beam over there to give them high speed.
And you also beam toward Horn Road?
I can see town from my house.
Right, it's, um, it's uh, there are, it's a pretty nice, yeah, there are limitations. And like every, every one that I set up is another piece of equipment that I have to maintain, so, but it's okay, I can...
So since she's moving out, clinic isn't gonna be using anything soon, you oughta have some free space and a, and a lot of equipment to...
I, yeah, I do have the equipment, um, would I, would I take that equipment out? That was my question for you all, would I take, when they leave, would I take that equipment out and, and turn off the connection to the clinic? I would think so, that's, was my, my idea.
I didn't hear what the comment was.
The, when, when she leaves, the clinic's, he's providing service to the clinic, I would think we would still let that be until they get their fiber optic line. We have an option to discuss.
Yeah, that's where I would go, I would say...
Be, be good stewards there.
Nothing that's gonna interfere with the work at the clinic.
Right.
If at some point they don't need us anymore, then I would say, "Let's take our..."
Right, that should, that should be in August, August first, they should be operational with that.
And we would free up a bunch of our land.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
I agree, and let's leave it in place until they no longer need it.
Alright. What do you...
Certainly have an opinion about that, um... I personally, as Commissioner, didn't have an issue with sharing that signal when public health was over there, public health is not over there. I, I would think if they are gracious enough to uh, let us out of the two months of the lease, uh, then I would be all on board with just leaving it. I was gonna ask you, can you share the timing with their fiber feed over there, could you share that timing with us? Um, but, and I think we need to know that, uh, but if they're not uh, willing to do that, if they just dig their heels in the ground and say, "No, we're gonna hold you to this contract." And if you want out, uh, it's, you know, a thousand dollars a month or whatever, uh, then I think we need to take another look at the, at the fact that we're shooting free broadband service. Ten times more than they had before public health got their feed.
Respectfully, I disagree. I think one thing doesn't do the other, I don't wanna play a game of, "Well, you're being not nice to me, I'm gonna be not nice to you." And I don't think that's appropriate. I think what's appropriate is if they need the broadband or the high speed internet to conduct business and we have it available, it's already there, it's not costing us anything extra. I think it'd be inappropriate for us to take it out regardless of what happens with the lease. I, I'm in agreeance, I reread the email that we got that Clint mentioned yesterday, that when they said three months. I believe they really felt three months is what it would take us to move as opposed to trying to hold us to it. I think they're above trying to be, like we're trying to be now, above pettiness. I think, I would be amazed if they come back and say, "We're holding you to the lease." So, that's just my opinion, I, I don't wanna interfere with their operations, people are sick, they need this, they need to get scans to doctors in Pueblo and all over the world. That's the last thing I wanna do is interfere with that business.
So they're gonna transition in three months?
To, to broadband, yes. Well, to, to the fiber, to the fiber connection.
Yeah, I just wanna work collaboratively, no question.
That's my, that's my feeling.
Together.
And I agree, I think if they tried to hold a weak state to them, that we're being good stewards, how about you meeting one, two? These are good stewards, this is not gonna be an issue, I know that, this would be foolish for that to, it's not gonna happen.
But we all work together.
That's the point, exactly.
We have meetings every, we have meetings every month over there, we all work together, so.
Back to the public health nurse thing, you can mount that antenna on the building up.
Yep.
But I think when they say they no longer need us, then we can take our, that's my personal opinion and hope you guys want it.
Well, I certainly think we respond accordingly when that situation comes, no longer need is might be a year from now, so, I don't, who knows, I'm just saying.
Let's see.
Uh, I agree with the context of what...
With CenturyLink?
And that's right, and, and you know, we can always revisit this, but the game plan is a few months. And, I mean, we literally could be talking life and death. I mean, if they need to get a scan over to a specialist in a, somewhere who can respond back to them quickly, I, I certainly don't wanna be the one at a spot. That just doesn't make sense to me.
I understand what you're saying. Anything else?
How's the replacement going?
Uh, computer replacement's going well, uh, JD's goes in tomorrow, or Friday. ACS is going through some major changeovers, so things are a little bit delayed there. Yes, ACS is, did they talk about that already? So ACS is moving from Syracuse, New York, I won't be saying Syracuse anymore, I'll be saying Fort Worth, Texas. ACS is moving and they are starting on Memorial Day weekend at two thirty in the afternoon. They're shutting down their servers and transferring all of their databases over to Fort Worth, Texas, coming back online Tuesday morning for uh, regular business.
How will that affect us?
Hopefully it doesn't.
So these replacement cameras for the county building you got?
Well, that was what I, um, those are things that I'm gonna be um, talking about in budget time, um, either grounds and maintenance or mine, because uh, the, the cameras are really starting to, I mean, they're significantly old.
So you haven't got it budgeted?
No, no, I don't have it budgeted yet.
That's a wish list.
I, I'm putting, yeah, I'm putting that into, just planting a seed right now, to see, to let you know, we'll be talking about that soon.
Are those some of the court security, originally court security funded cameras?
Yeah.
So, in the, in the uh, grant application that starts July first.
Uh-huh.
Uh, we applied for um, funding to replace four cameras.
Oh really, okay.
I wanna say four, but it's also to add two additional cameras, so I'm sorry, it's six cameras total, add two, replace four.
Oh, okay.
Just so you're aware, so...
Oh, that's great.
If, if that's approved, now I set on the court security commission, probably won't happen because of some funding struggles with the state.
I see.
So, but if it does happen, I'll let you know and then we can use that for some of those cameras for...
Okay, wonderful, thank you. Um, well, we've got a total of nineteen?
Yeah, there's a lot, yeah.
I think we've got nineteen cameras, um, regarding court security, there's about six, so...
No questions?
They're all pretty old.
I mean, it's changed so quickly. Jackie Hobbie had asked us about a new laptop, she was having a problem with hers, is that...
Um, I fixed her laptop, I was able to fix that one.
Wonderful, thank you.
Operator here.
No, no, there was actually something, looked like it kind of been dropped or some things needed to be plugged back in inside, and so...
He's not climbing over dirt piles.
It's, it's good to go.
Could take the price of a new computer and apply that to a bonus for your money, but you don't need it, I mean, I don't wanna put it in a tax bracket.
No, that's okay, I uh, we'll just, I, I had to buy, I had to buy her a new computer anyway, so, a, a desktop a little bit ago, so it's all...
Anything else sir?
No, I believe that's it.
Alright, thank you.
Okay. Oh, well, thank you sir, I really appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you all.
A lot of unseen hours.
Careful, that's the lawyer's hand.
He, he got my iPad working again. He, he got my iPad working again the other day, so.
Very appreciative.
Take care.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Take care, all.
Thank you, sir.
No, it's O-E-M.
This is M.
No.
No, this is M.
No. She's on vacation, but y'all have to refer.
Yeah, okay. Um, thank you. O-E-M, but this is M, with your thumb across, see, my thumb don't cross very well.
It's all out our throats.
M?
O-E-M.
Oh, M, here.
There, sorry.
Thumb out.
Does everybody know this?
She had hers. I thought it was like this.
Thumb out or M?
M and M. Okay, there, sorry, I didn't run.
So I read this morning on the news that.
Outside?
One of the baseball stadiums, um, a fan is gonna be banned for life because behind the reporter, he was giving some white power symbol or something.
I thought he was giving signals.
Where's that rabbit?
Yeah, yeah, no kidding.
Talk about going down a trail.
Be careful when you O-E-M, you know, the, the bloods and the crips may take that wrong, and you're in trouble.
I'm amazed at all that you even know that.
I know.
She speaks sign language.
I only know one sign language.
I know. Do I?
Speak it or do you feel it?
Yeah, no, you speak, speak it.
My daughter is bilingual and sign language.
Silent speech, have you never heard that?
Sure.
She's a good aunt.
She teaches it, she's fabulous.
I speak Mark Howard.
Yeah, that's all.
I get it.
That's a rabbit hole the size of a game, I swear.
Uh, at the risk of being rude, any comments, questions, concerns about E-M report? There's more on there than I digested, I'm not gonna lie to you about that, but.
I just get so upset, and it's me, with N-R-E-M-R-D-H-S-E. I understand, you may know it, but I don't when I'm reading, but E-M-T, that one I do know. But I mean, there's so many acronyms here that it just drives me up the wall.
The first time it's mentioned, courtesy is, you, you write it out, and you put the initials, and you refer back to it, but you should always do that.
And I'm not, I don't mean this as a negative, it's just difficult for me when I see all these, I don't know.
But it doesn't mean anything. C-O-D-H-S-E-M, R-F-M-C-O-E. Crazy.
The current S-W is complete.
Yeah, scope of work.
Statement of work. Statement of work. Could be scoped to.
Okay, um. I believe we need a motion to accept the report, although we can, if you so desire.
I haven't accepted any others, I don't know.
It's okay. All right. Any other questions, comments, over here? We'll move on. Uh, next item of business. Unfinished items, gentlemen? Nor do I, Commissioner Ken?
No.
We'll move on to new business, um. Are you okay, sir, or do, should we bump? Okay. Uh, I move to accept the letter of resignation from Elizabeth French as our, uh, current planning and zoning clerk.
I'll reluctantly second that.
Moving to second it to accept resignation, Elizabeth French, discussion?
I would just like to say that she's been with us for many, many, many years. And, um, I would just like to say, I really appreciate the service that she has given to the county. And I think she, um, is going to retire with her husband, who recently retired, and I wish them the very best.
Yeah, I, I think she's been a valuable asset over there, certainly has a ton of knowledge. Uh, the idea here would be that she's gonna, um, block out some time to train a new person, which is why we'd like to move forward and get, uh, get a higher REE so that we can have some training. Did you get my email this morning?
Yep. Fire me.
No, you, yeah, not happening. Yeah. So I agree with you, I certainly, uh, value her work and assistance and. I'm, I know she will be missed over there, she's done a good job, not only there in, in the community as well, her work with Rebecca French and, uh, that, that may continue as well as the theater stuff, but, uh, done a good job. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. We have accepted resignation of Elizabeth French, thank you.
She says she'll be right over.
Okay, that's fine. I would beg one more.
Indulgence.
What's ex, excusation?
You wanna bail out again?
Yes, if you don't mind, uh, we'll stand in recess for a couple minutes.
That's what I wanted to.
Okay, thanks.
Is it that bad that they're?
It came in to escort you out.
Meeting will come back to. Pardon?
Chuck, he's not on here.
Meeting, meeting will come back to order, she's a guest.
A guest.
Next item of business under, the new business is consideration of salary for the planning and zoning clerk position. Thank you for being here, ladies.
We're being hobbyized.
It feels awkward for me to do this in an open meeting initially. Certainly, I, I know that the discussion needs to be public. Just not used to operating in that realm, so the big question is, how much money are we gonna offer the new planning and zoning clerk?
Before we answer that.
Yes, sir.
Chairman, if you don't mind. I'm wondering if it's really appropriate to have this in an open meeting, and here's why. To me, it's like a contract negotiation. We're going to be hiring a new person at some point. If we give out the parameters, I think we're letting our hand up. I think it's, I, I think this would lend, in my opinion and all, certainly defer to counsel. This would lend itself to negotiations, contract negotiations, even though the position is not a contract position, but it would give someone an undue advantage of knowing this information. I s, I suggest that this be done in the executive session for that reason.
Okay.
That is my.
Let me make a comment along that line.
Yes, sir.
So we can all have an input. Uh, I, I agree, uh, but to me, right now it's public information what the wages are for everybody. But what's not understood is a window for each of the positions. There, there should be a, in most places, a salary, low and high, here's the bracket. And then the actual negotiation, will you bring in a new person in? And usually you have scales, you know, where you, you know, you're starting at the bottom, here's what the, the window is, more or less. If we were gonna get specific with, with a, um, an advertisement, you, you, you would always wanna post the, the window, but you don't necessarily have to post the exact wage either until you, you have that executive session where we're gonna figure out what we're gonna do. To me, it's public, not.
Yeah, I'm not sure it's actually an executive session, a legal executive session, it's not a negotiation. We're not gonna negotiate with anybody, we're gonna set a salary.
Set a range.
Well, you can go into executive session if you feel that disclosing information in, in a public meeting would give someone else an unfair advantage. And, and it's for contracts, really, and this may not lend itself, I'm just a little concerned about that, but if it's not an issue, I'll un, unconcern myself and move forward.
Make the window that is personal.
Yeah, obviously, I, I mean, I share the same concern, basically, but for different reasons. I mean, I, I don't think we're gonna put anybody at an unfair advantage. If we just right now said it's gonna be X number of dollars, I don't see that putting anybody at a disadvantage. We have to advertise. I don't particularly care for the old salary commensurate, commensurate upon experience thing. If that's what we choose to do, that's fine, but, uh, I just don't see how we would put somebody at a disadvantage in this situation because if it's not a negotiated contract. Ms. Jackie, you had comments?
Yeah, I would like it to be an executive session because I think that, for one thing, I will be talking about a personnel issue also.
Well, not during that, you wouldn't.
During that.
No, okay.
Yeah.
And then also, uh, your turn, try something different.
My only concern is that as we're discussing this, we may be comparing employees, and with the smallest staffs that we have, it would, it would be bad, that. So, and not an executive session, or just a workshop where we could muddle through and look to paperwork and pick.
To me, gee whiz, uh, take personalities and people out of it, you got a position that's worth X.
Right.
To me.
Yeah, I agree, I, I don't know that, I certainly wouldn't start comparing it with other employees. We have a position to field. Now, if there was four of those clerk positions in the planning and zoning, I could see that. Doesn't matter to me what anybody else is getting paid in, in this county when it comes to assigning the salary. And, and Commissioner Prince hit it right on the head. We are paying for our own sins. If we had a salary schedule and a range from A to B for every position in this county, we wouldn't be having this discussion. We would start them out at probably the beginning salary or consider their experience level.
If they had experience, they'd come in at a step higher.
Yes, ma'am.
And absolutely true, but I don't ever recall when a job opened that we've had a meeting where we discussed that salary.
Right.
And we've hired VS, I mean, we've hired quite a few people. We've had them all in workshops, that was my only concern.
Yeah, no, and I understand that completely. Uh, that's why we just didn't bail off into doing something, um, I would defer to counsel, obviously, on the legal parameters of this thing. Uh, if it's, if it's not here, and, and we say, well, put it in a workshop, that's not happening. So the only way that's gonna happen is you go behind closed doors in somebody's office and you decide, or we decide as the county commissioner is what we're gonna offer for a salary, either in a public meeting or in executive session.
Can I, can I make a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
I know that we never, going back to our workshop that we had for salaries and stuff, that we never finished.
Right.
Don't we have to start somewhere?
Yes.
So why can't Jackie come up with a range? Here's your low, here's your high, and be the first person that starts that?
There are other people that have it in place, but.
Well, there are.
Even if we didn't, that's a good idea, that should be done, anyway, but that position's worth X.
Yeah. And, and if somebody comes in with no experience, you start them low. But if they come in and they've got a little bit more experience, wouldn't you wanna start them a little bit higher than?
I think we'd have a range in there that you could plug them in.
And then that range you could negotiate.
Countywide, we do not have that in place that I'm aware of, and it's just inexcusable. We're gonna struggle with this every time we have a.
So, but we're not gonna solve that here in this one, we wanna solve it now, and so I don't know why we can't start a range, get, get a recommendation, and, and let's get it advertised.
Me again, please.
Counselor, are we?
Right now, I haven't heard anything that would make this fit into an executive session.
Thank you.
Okay, so, you have a lot of employees, not a lot, that are underneath your umbrella. I am one. But the employee that, let's just use Roden Bridge.
No, let's talk about planning and zoning.
Hang on, my point is, uh, do you, when Gary or Laura hires someone, do they have, I know Gary does, he has a wage scale, right, an operator scale? Does he come in and say, I hired this guy, or do you guys? What I'm getting at is what is the policy here?
We don't have one.
So Gary can hire and fire.
He does.
Laura can hire and fire, but you choose me to do this process with?
Good point. Because we do not have a process, we had no idea how to move forward. If we had a process that spelled that out, we wouldn't probably be sitting here, but we don't.
Okay, so the only thing that I would think that would be of a concern, now, I, I'm just talking off, don't hold me responsible, uh, would be the wage. And if I have the wage to cover my new employee, I, 'cause you have to guess on the health benefits, why can I, why am I any different? Why can't I just take the applicants, pick out three or four, interview them, and say, this is the one I choose?
Okay, she brings up a good point, because she was talking the, with, abuse Gary again, 'cause that, without a policy, that is a policy. We, we, we actually have the leadership of that organization tell us what it is, and, and we either agree or we don't agree with who they hire, how, you know, the processes. I think that would be a fair, uh, she's bringing up a fair point, if she, she knows what the wage is, and that's a public as well, uh, why aren't you recommending that to us in the first place?
'Cause we don't have a policy to dictate that, that's part of the problem.
This would be the first time that the commissioners hired the zoning secretary. Lee hired his own, and so did Peggy.
That's the point. I completely concur. I can't believe I'm saying this with Jackie. I meant that, I meant that as a joke.
And you're on record.
I meant that, I meant that as a joke.
I'm just saying.
I think you're right. You know, we don't ask Laura Lockhart to have us do the hiring for her. We don't have, and I recognize that these are elected officials. We don't have, you don't, you don't come to us and say, this is, you know, I wanna hire. I think we, as a tribunal, need to determine what is this position, what range is it? And say, Jackie, go for it when you have the person you are most comfortable with presented to us, and I think we could say yes or no, and I think that's appropriate. I'm not even sure we even have to say yes or no, I think we could say, introduce us to you.
It's just a matter of the salary, it flows out of their budget, it's a different story.
When you hire that person.
To my knowledge, we don't have any current non-elected supervisors that would come to us for anything. Certainly Roden Bridge does not, they just hired a part-time employee, we had nothing to say about that. The only way I don't, I knew about that was because I asked an employee of the Roden Bridge. If, I guess we wanna know, then when they come to give us a staff report, we can ask. But, uh, I, I understand exactly what you're saying. I hope you don't think we're singling you out to say, okay, we're, we're not gonna let planning and zoning hire them. I have no idea. Without a written policy, we're walking around like a bunch of goombaws, and I don't care for it.
Okay, and that's my point. My point is, is that until you have a written policy, you can't change the rules.
Well, there are no rules, so we can do whatever we want.
We have a precedent.
That's the problem.
Well, Tom, you're right, literally, but, but in practice, uh, precedence has set, you know, the leaders of these organizations have been doing it, and we, all we've been doing is setting a budget for that organization to operate. They haven't blown that budget, so legally, everything's legit. So, that in itself is a policy, whether we have it written down or not, that's the way it's been.
I think we do have a policy, which is.
As I indicated to Ms. Jackie, just put it in front of me and I'll be quiet. Until you can put, show it to me in writing, I disagree respectfully. Uh, we need to have a policy. Oh, I wanna jump up and down and scream that we need to have a policy. It is a weakness in this county organization that we don't have. So with that, I certainly would defer back to Ms. Jackie as a supervisor to hire and release her own personnel, just like we would allow Rusty Gary, I'm trying to think of the non-elected officials, 'cause they don't enter into this conversation. Are there any others?
So Rusty Gary, Laura.
Laura. Cindy.
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 Yeah, I mean, all of them, this would be the only.
They nut, they were, they were bugging us about who they hired.
Only the ones that you are the direct supervisors over, and then what they do.
So your point's very well taken. But don't think I'm arguing one bit, I'm just so frustrated.
Now, if it was my position, because I work directly, that's a whole different story.
Right, exactly, exactly. Supervisor's positions would report to us, and we'd be having a different conversation. So, um, what's the group's opinion?
My suggestion would be, let's talk about a salary range for that position, so that we can, so we give a direction to our supervisor, planning and zoning, to know what parameters she's working in, and say, go take care of business, and let us introduce us to your new employee when you hire them.
Well, is there a specific amount budgeted now for your assistant?
Sure.
Well.
You have a budget in your office, you're operating within your budget, period. I don't know that we need to do that, Jake, unless.
Do we have salary ranges for other positions?
Some we do, some we don't.
Okay, well, they're operating in that budget.
Issue here is, it's kinda like, um, Mr. Rice over, over at Roden Bridge. He's the highest paid employee, I, the, one of the highest paid, I think this one is paid high. But it's because of his longevity.
Well, I'm gonna call point of order, sir, I, respectfully, I just, I'm not sure, Commissioner or Counselor, I'll defer to you. We're getting off into personnel issues. I defer.
My feeling is that it's in her budget, I mean, there's amount that's figured in, she's not gonna hire a new employee at that maximum amount, I'm limited to her expression to what she feels.
In, in respect to. Right. In respect to Commissioner Prince, my point of order was just, should we be talking about longevity?
I mean, you are absolutely, I have no issue. I used to name, and I should not have.
Okay.
My point was, long-term employees have evolved to a much higher salary than what a new person would take. So, and I'm not sure that, that, I think that needs to be taken in consideration with a new hire.
And our only input so far has been, in budget discussions, salaries at large, and we were dealing with percentages and et cetera. So, I think it's legit for her to...
I had a great salary thing when we had our salary ranges, but it just went...
Yeah, and Jackie was actually one of the two or three that did have salary ranges. I don't remember what they were. Do, do you have a salary beginning, an initial and a final salary range right now?
Yes.
That you could quote to us?
I'll work with Donna on the budget, what I have left of my budget, plus my payout, and then Donna has the figures whether they take one-time insurance or family insurance.
If I asked you right now what a beginning salary would be for your planning and zoning clerk, could you answer that?
No, but Donna probably could help me. I was thinking to start out with what J.D. had done.
I just, I'm just asking. So, again, back to Ms. Kelly's point, if this isn't a very pointed indicator that we are circling the drain in this area, I don't know what would be. So, back to that whole salary thing, I know we spent several hours dealing with it, as typically.
Twice.
And nothing ever happened from it. So, I would like, at some point, commissioners to at least recommend to our supervisor positions that they have a lower and an upper salary range for every job description within their department.
Maybe that's a good discussion to have when we start the process.
Not rocket science. Yes, ma'am.
I'd hate to see you guys micromanaging.
No, I agree.
You know, I mean, she, you know, she doesn't have to come to you and say, "I need copy paper." You know, and she's got a budget. She, and, and, and we all know that Elizabeth's been here forever, so she's probably way at the high end, but it's up to Jackie, you know, if she wants, if she, and if she has issues, then she could come to you and go, "I have an issue." It's just from the public's perspective.
Way ahead on here is what, Tom. We wanna go forward with this position.
Well, I think if the three of us are in consent, then we just give it to Jackie and let her run with it. Ms. Hobbie?
You...
Satisfied with that approach?
Yes, I am.
Come back, and you guys get together, you're gonna know what you're gonna have left, your payout, what you got now, and what you're gonna do next year, roughly, salary. Let us know.
Well, yeah, that would be a courtesy. There's nothing to say you even have to let us know.
Right.
No, because you don't have a policy.
That's right.
Exactly right.
And I'm finding that I don't have to do anything because we don't have a policy.
Just a, just a question out of curiosity. Is it, and Donna answered this better than, isn't it, is it an advantage to the county to have an employee such as the zoning and planning secretary, is that correct?
Clerk.
Clerk, I'm sorry, on a salary instead of hourly? Is there an advantage to the county? I don't understand why they would be a salaried employee, because then, then all kinds of other complications come into a salaried employee versus an hourly employee.
Can you name some complications?
Sure, like, now you start talking about exempt status. So, if, if they're sal, if they're a quote-unquote salaried employee, then...
They are exempt.
Now, you have to determine, is that salary plus overtime? So, if some, if you had something come up and that, and your employee had to work an hour late, then you would have to pay them overtime if they're, if they're hourly. But if they're salaried, then you have some wiggle room in there, and so, I'm just, I'm just curious. I'm not trying to bring, I'm just not...
No, again, I, I just think it's a weakness in the county organization that we don't even, we can't even define what a salaried employee is, really.
Hourly employees or hourly employees?
Hourly or salary, one of the two, and exempt and non-exempt, to me, line up perfectly with those two categories.
I'm just, in my experience, I've never seen so many salaried employees in an organization like this. I mean, they're typically hourly.
Yeah. And I, somebody asked me, who decides whether they're salaried or hourly? Supervisors, board of commissioners, I would assume the commission would, but...
It's the 35-hour week in the budget, that if we went to time clock, everyone would lose an hour of their pay, I mean, because we actually work 35 hours a week.
Well, they could be hourly and be paid for a 40-hour week.
We paid more.
But then you would visit, yeah, and, and, but, then if I'm paying on the lunch hour, and I'm paying them for 40, then the overtime would kick in at 40.
Well, you can still adjust that.
But it shouldn't, right?
Well, I...
Shouldn't ever.
It can still set one.
And the point is, I have no time clocks. So, that's where, that's where the whole thing comes in.
If Jackie's clerk worked 42 hours and she was hourly, she paid two hours overtime. But overtime has to be approved prior to, by the supervisor. So, Jackie would control whether or not her employee's gonna get overtime according to the personnel manual. So, I don't know. I'm not arguing, please don't think I am. I just, I've had the same question asked me, "How do you determine if a position is salary or hourly?" I'm, I said, "I have no idea." And I'd like for somebody to tell me. This is how we decide that.
Do you have any hourly employees?
Oh, yeah, we got a lot of hourly.
All likewise are hourly.
Oh, okay.
There's no reason why you couldn't make it hourly, Jackie, it's...
Well, yeah, I don't know.
She could. There's no magic to it.
About 50 people out of 83 are.
Oh, wow.
And I certainly have not researched enough to know the advantage and disadvantage of this specific example of your clerk. That's, I guess that would be, again, as a supervisor, I suppose that would be up to you. I would think, out of nothing else, courtesy, you might come to the commissioner and say, "Hey, I'm thinking about making this position salary or hourly." But, yeah, I mean, I just think supervisors need to be treated as supervisors.
Yep.
On both sides of the coin. Feet held to the fire, and also allowed the trust and the wherewithal to do their job.
My, my whole thing is, you gotta have some policies so that everyone has a starting point and an ending point. But then you're back to the point of, you cannot compare apples and oranges.
You wouldn't have to, because you're asking each supervisor to do their own. If we did it for everybody, then we would be, I think. But if you, if each supervisor's given that opportunity, I don't see the apples and oranges thing there. Outside of the supervisors' categories, nobody's business. J.D. not gonna start telling you, "Hey, you got this all messed up." That would never happen.
No, but I agree. That's, that's the best way to do, and we, we get going on a roll, and then we stop.
Exactly. Life gets in the way, work gets in the way.
Or an election happens.
Or an election happens. And how many elections have there's never been, that I've seen a document of anything finally being decided? These kind of things could roll through one election to the next. I mean, somebody could change the policy, but at least there'd be a policy to change.
But I said a minute ago, you're absolutely right. You should dictate how you do this. And I hate to talk about areas of responsibility, but I wouldn't mind sitting in your interviews with you, not that, just to bounce it off. The nice thing is, if you made a terrible choice, which could be, I mean, someone could interview wonderfully and turn out to be not a good person, you know, it doesn't just fall back on you. So, I mean, we've done that when we hired the janitor and the cleaning young lady, and then, you know, we've sat in on the interview, I have. So, it's...
And I'm gonna...
And I'm at both areas.
And I'll think about that.
Human resources and planning and zoning. I wouldn't mind sitting there just to listen.
See, the problem is, is that zoning is a strange book. Unless you know anything about zoning, what questions would you ask? You know, because it's a whole different set of documents, and I know that you guys have been involved in the planning commission and stuff, but, you know, there's some questions that, you know, need to be asked if you're going to, I just want a policy.
You're, you're the boss, and you know what it is.
How do you make coffee, force groups or fines?
I know we're kinda rabbit-trailing here a little. I wonder then, too, if, and I'm thinking about Roden Bridge, for example, I guess it's incumbent upon the commissioners then to say, "Have you hired, have you fired? Give us a report on your personnel." I mean, every month, because other than that, there's not that channel of communication expected or policy, either one. But, I mean, can you imagine, it's different, because she's in this building, but can you imagine Jackie losing an employee and hiring an employee, and we didn't know anything about it? That would be pretty weird in my book, because we're in the same building. But you look at Rusty, Roden Bridge...
But, you know, that's why we have staff reports. That's when you would go through that conversation. We do that. We don't get into Gary's hair down there and want the interviewers, operators for a greater, those positions are set, they know what the scale is, et cetera.
Yeah. So, with that being said, I wonder if we shouldn't consider asking Jackie to give us a monthly staff report as well?
There's no reason why we can't.
Just like our other supervisors do. I think you're the only one that does it, actually.
She used to. Actually, she comes in all the time. We get a report from her about every week.
We used to have, we used to get a monthly report from her.
That's the only reason I'm still here, just I look forward to the one Jackie comes in.
Dang, you've been missing her.
But it could be a staff, not, not a detail thing, you know, it's a...
Do you remember when the last report I did in Wetmore?
Yeah.
He got irritated.
Yes, I remember that.
Counselor, do you feel like we need a motion to give her some direction here, or not?
I don't think so. I...
Mr. Consent?
Yeah, this isn't really, this isn't a decision on anything that affects her. It's just, you know, procedural procedures.
What do you think, Ms. Donna?
No, I, I, it would be odd for you to hire another person's secretary, not the other way around. So, I think this is just going with the way it's always been.
Yeah. No, I think we're on solid ground.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am, ladies, both of you. Thank you for coming in. Next item of business...
Final opera here with the sheriff.
Next item of business is discussion of the evacuation plan for our courthouse. I asked, invited Mr. Bailey to come over and...
Didn't wanna shake down his hand for stopping him.
Yes, no. Or Jackie's. So, Mr. Bailey, would you like to come and have a conversation with us?
Certainly. I, I don't think I'm the one on this one. I mean, quite frankly, I like the fire chief is the one that would be the fires, the evacuation folks, not the police, but...
Well, and, and I thought this conversation kind of originated with the insurance person.
It did.
And you, and you had that conversation. That's the only reason I asked.
I get you. I get you. Yeah.
No, I think if it's an active shooting drill, fire has nothing to do with that initially, probably. So, I don't, I didn't think of it as a fire, sheriff, whatever. I just know that you had a conversation with the guy. That's...
So, Mike, so Mike has to be an integral part of this conversation, obviously, because he's here all the time. And actually, this, this conversation did not originate with the insurance, with John Wagner. Actually, this conversation, from my perspective, originated within the first three months that I took office, when Mike and I sat down, and he's like, "Look, we don't have an evacuation plan in the county building at all." And I said, "What do you mean?" And then I was like, speechless.
It's been a topic for the two previous boards, and it's just been that a topic.
And it's, a lot of it's been that the board just hasn't driven. And then, listen, we have to, I mean, if, God forbid, we were to have anything, from a, from a gas leak to a fire, to a, you know, a workplace violence, active shooter, I mean...
One of the downfalls that we have in this building is, there's no warning system. There's no fire alarm, there's no nothing. So, there's, there's not a logical way to notify all the people in the building, whether they work here or they're just visiting, that there's a danger and they need to get out of the building.
They're then a smoke detector.
Serious? Yeah, and, and, you know, we change the batteries twice a year, but there, there's nothing. So, it's the old-fashioned way, run through the building, yell, "Fire."
Right.
When there's an emergency, you don't really have time to do that.
Right.
The old phone system had the intercom that could be used, but the new one, in my understanding, is it doesn't.
I don't, I don't think it has.
I don't think there's an intercom.
So, can we back up a little bit? If we had an evacuation plan, what are the components of that? Obviously, maps in every room, just show the evacuation routes.
Well, we do have those.
Okay. And then some kind of a warning system?
And the discussion needs to, in my opinion, and it's something that we all need to brainstorm, and that's why the fire department's pretty critical, because we have to look at the circumstances we would have to evacuate this building. Fire would naturally be one. A bomb threat would naturally be one. An active shooter is a different approach. So, that's why the fire is important, you know, but you don't wanna make it too complicated. You gotta evacuate the building. Two things we wanna get is, get everybody out, have accountability, and keep it as simple as you can. In the case of a fire, it just, to me, makes common sense, if the employees could get in their cars, put it in the parking lot, that's one less obstacle for the fire department. In the case of a bomb threat, you don't wanna go in there anything.
Right.
We have to determine a safe evacuation place to go to. We need to determine an accountability for, and that's probably where each department head be responsible for who's in their office. So, like, say if, if J.D.'s evacuating upstairs, and he's got customers in his office, he needs to be able to, even if he tells his people to get in your car and go home, we need to know that that happened, so we can account for these people. And it's not that complicated, we just need to have the process. And I think one of the most critical things is, is an alarm system. I mean, the fire department hired a company, and they went in and put in an alarm system down there. It's all wireless, and, and I even, I think it was the previous board, I even had those, those people come here, evaluate the building to give us a price.
We did have, we had a price estimate.
And...
Where's the price estimate now, you know?
They never, they never, they just dropped the ball and never, never came back.
People never got that.
The company, they came here and evaluated the building, and I may have their contact information, because I don't remember now if that was through the board, or, but it came up, and so we got to that step. But regardless of whatever happens with this building, it's a public building, there shouldn't, I mean, we're remiss not to have...
Seems like that would be the first, if you gotta have an alarm, and then you have to come up with a process.
And then typically, how do you activate that alarm? Is there a person, is it, is it like our emergency button now, or...
Well, look at the schools. They got fire alarms all over the building, and they're all the wireless.
Pull the little lever and go.
And, and they, they talk to each other. I mean, they're not that complicated. So, if one goes off, it triggers all the alarms. So, everybody has their evacuation plan for their room, every teacher knows how to get their, where they're going.
Where they're gonna go, where they're gonna assemble. See, in my, in my mind, and the reason I say it's critical we have a fire, the fire chief involved, or, or his designees. So, you don't wanna make it too complicated. So, essentially, you have two plans, right? The one would be bomb scare, workplace violence, any of that, where you're not gonna have anybody get in a car, you're not gonna have anybody, it's gonna be by foot, and you're gonna go somewhere, a designated spot, or two. But then, from the fire aspect, right, as a, as a cop, I say, "Okay, yeah, if there's a fire, it'd probably be great to get those cars out of there." But the fire chief may disagree, and, and the reason is, is, once fire gets on scene and they start to unravel hoses, you don't want cars moving around, because a car cannot drive over a fire hose. And I've actually written people tickets for driving over fire hoses, trying to protect a fire scene while the firefighters are trying to do their job, and, and it ruins the hose. So, so he may go, "Look, if there's a fire, I don't want people driving cars around, because now it's chaos, and we can't maintain the scene." So, but we need his input on that.
I get that.
But, but ultimately, we want two plans, and that's it. If, if the fire alarm goes off...
Do this.
Do this. If we have a fill-in-the-blank, yeah, a critical incident here, do this, and that's it. We don't want it, because, you know, it's a stressful situation, you'd wanna be, "Well, okay, wait, I need to do..."
Can I present something the fire department would do for the fire, and your office would do for the crackle incident?
I think we need to collaboratively get together and say, they would say, "This is what we suggest." We would say, "This is what we suggest," and then you guys, you gentlemen would be, "This is what we're gonna do." You know what I mean? Now, that doesn't mean you have to mastermind it. You can look and go, "Yeah, that makes sense."
And it ought to be inclusive of all the county buildings, in my view.
Yeah.
Ultimately, VSO, DM... There's more activity. There's more activity here.
I know.
The public.
But we need a big picture.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, I don't think we probably need fire alarms in the airport building at this point. Now, someday we might.
Or the landfill.
Or the landfill.
Right.
Or the VSO building.
You know, but as much as.
Different story, because you're gonna get a fire truck in here, and things are gonna happen.
But I mean, it's as much, it's, let's say, we have something in Kelly's, in her office, sort of, not only is she concerned about her people that are in there, but then also the general public, to be able to tell them, hey, listen, you need to do this. That's where we really start getting, it's hard. We have enough liability with our own employees, but then all of a sudden, now you're talking to citizens.
So what I'm hearing is we probably need to do a workshop with fire and, and the sheriff's department.
Court.
And the court. And anybody else who feels appropriate, let's get together. Excuse me. Excuse me.
Pleasure.
Thank you. And, um, start working towards a plan. I, I think it's imperative. I would like to find out what a fire alarm system in this building would cost and figure out how we can afford to do it. I mean, this is a public building. We, we have to protect the citizens, and we need to work that out.
And, and to be, to be quite frank, so we start talking about fire alarm system, all that, I really think that the fire department ought to be driving that. That's not ours, that's not ours especially. Yeah, I really do.
With everybody involved.
They, they're gonna know the companies that do that better than us. I mean, now, Mike has done some work on that, and, and I I certainly appreciate the work you can do, and it can be helpful, but.
Is his alarm on wireless, sir? So he, he has all those.
That's my understanding.
And I thought, you and I had this conversation a while back, and I thought you had said, and I'm not gonna quote you, but I thought we were talking around seventeen thousand bucks to put.
No, that was, that was what the, the duress button system that we put in the building was around fourteen replacement for, uh, because it's now dated, uh, and no three more years, no longer even be serviced.
Right.
And that, that's around seventeen. I think the fire alarm system, um, best to my understanding, is gonna be closer to a five thousand dollar figure.
So if it was a fire alarm system, we use that for critical incident as well?
Yeah, it's, it's some kind of warning system. Everybody knows that they need to get out of the building.
You gotta go.
Right.
You don't need to know whether it's fire or anything else.
You want a shelter in place. I mean, isn't that an option? So you don't necessarily always want everybody running out of the building?
And that's the challenge, without having some type of, uh, overhead intercom type system to know if that fire alarm goes, right? I mean, if you're upstairs, or you're in the restroom here, and the fire alarm goes off.
You're gonna go.
You assume it's a fire.
You know.
That's what I was getting at.
But like a dress system or an intercom is, is also a wire, could be, I mean, you could still do that.
I would think so.
I think it could broadcast whatever.
I think court security, critical incident, and fire.
Yeah.
Would be.
Appropriate.
Appropriate for entities to really sit down.
I would agree with that.
Yeah. Do you, as two of the three, the process, reach out to those three entities? Hey, can you pick one of these four possible dates to have a workshop, meet with commissioners? Is that reasonable? More reasonable than just saying, we're having a workshop on this date, which we tried that this afternoon, and I'm not sure how that's gonna work out. So do a little sur- informal survey, say which of these dates work best for you?
Sure.
That makes sense? Because if we don't put something on the calendar, we're not gonna get any traction.
And that's, and that's why I brought this up first, to talk about it, so that we can.
So is Kit coming to this one this afternoon?
Yes.
So you can huddle there?
Yeah.
He is, but, uh, again, maybe out in the hall there or whatever, we could say, what do you guys think? I just think we need to get moving. If it's a significant amount of money, then probably have to go through the budget cycle.
Right.
And deal with it next year, but not August of next year, you know, I mean, we gotta have something, or we're gonna get.
I think it's just proper to at least investigate.
Cause, I mean, by the time you get an estimate on what that, you know, a cost estimate on what that would be, and if it's feasible, and all those type of things, it's probably gonna be into the fall. And so.
Might lower our insurance costs.
Well, you would hope it. I was mortified that CTSI doesn't come in and go, wait a second, you guys have a building like this, and and you won't spend eight thousand dollars to, you know, I mean, I'm just pulling that number. I, I can't believe they aren't more demanding about that type of stuff.
Um, gentlemen, is one of us interested in taking the lead, at least to get a calendar put together and reach out? I will do that if, unless you prefer. I, I don't care. I just wanna share this.
You're welcome to. I'm fine. I think it's imperative that we do this.
I agree.
I feel very embarrassed, as a commissioner, not to have said, what is our emergency plan? I mean, why did I think of this before? I'm embarrassed. I should have been, I should have been on top of this. I'm sorry.
Well, I can help, doesn't matter.
Well, you assume when you have a building of this size that, that's already there. I mean, you just do.
There was. I mean, I should have said, what is our emergency plan? If someone said, we don't have one, I would have gone, wait a minute, let's start working on one. I should have done that.
Well, it's not the first thing everybody thinks about, anyway.
You know, I know that little button's there.
It's like.
Every time I sit down, they go, there's an incident, I'm gonna push that button. But that is not the same thing as upstairs, where they may not have a button, and there's a fire.
They do.
I mean, I, it just.
But still.
Still, right, a fire.
So well taken.
We, we need a system to notify everybody in this building, that, hey, something's going on. And then a procedure for what they should do.
The key is, as long, as long as we don't focus on what's, but as long as we're moving forward, that's the key at this point. We just can't, we can't say, oh, it has never been that.
So.
We'll fix it.
Chairman, if you'd like to take the lead, I'm fine with that. I, I just wanna get it moving. I'm, I'm fine.
And I don't want to freak you out, Mr. Chairman, but you can do a little survey monkey, and you can send it out to all the people involved with a schedule and say, click on the days you're available, and then look at it. I don't know if you've ever done one of those. There's super cake.
The only thing you forget is about the name, because in my world, it's a monkey survey. But that's it. Other than that, I get it.
We're on the same page.
Use it frequently. Uh, so I wanna throw this out. I think we've got to move forward and get some serious traction on this salary thing. So I'd like a commissioner to volunteer to really get in the middle of that, as well as a commissioner to volunteer to do this.
Well, I'm kind of the HR guy, so if you'd like me to do the salary, I'll be happy to take that one.
You'll do that?
No, I don't.
I'm not, no, I'm not trying to dodge it. I just don't, I wanna have equal opportunity for us. If you, if you would be willing to take that on.
I'll do it.
My plate's reasonably full.
And you're doing a lot of, of maintenance.
So if we could, I think, don't you guys get those three entities and the commissioners together a workshop for us? Probably, the biggest problem is gonna be finding a date that everybody agrees on.
Yeah, you can do that. I'll do it.
And then we move forward, and we get something budgeted.
Yeah, because it's, I think it's a simple process. We just need to do it.
Yeah, good. Well, thank you. That's, this is what I was hoping would happen, some kind of discussion and get some direction. Very good. All right. Thank you, sir. Um.
That clock was waking me out. I'm telling you. Did you see me looking at it? And then I was looking at my watch, and I was like.
Uh, you can thank landfill for that.
I'll fix it. Turn it upside down.
Yeah.
Or that's a joke.
Or turn it hundred and eighty.
That is right.
That's good. Well, thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming in. And before you leave, uh, landfill provided the clock. I provided a tool.
There's your tool.
And these two are gonna bring something.
What is that? Is that an old air notcher?
Yes.
Oh, that's, oh, I never mind. I mean, that is. Yeah, it sure is. Okay, I see.
All right, thank you.
Are we gonna do public, are we gonna do public comment, or should go?
Uh, I'm gonna do public comment, yes.
Cause I, I just wanted to bring a couple things to your attention.
So he knows what's going on.
Jackie was next up. I wanted to jump in there, cause I, cause I have to be home by now.
See, that's how come I don't get reports. That was just me.
You just about made me gabble a show.
She knows I'm right.
Cause he was being rude. All right. Next item of business, public comment. Uh, I'm gonna defer to Commissioner Prince for a public comment, because he asked, and we blew by it like a bad habit. Uh, and that was, you wanted to have a little conversation about board packets.
I've heard it.
Oh, you did?
It's all, all done.
Okay, sorry. Cause I knew, I said, yeah, let's do that, and then I.
I felt very comfortable handling that. It's not a private suggestion, and it's all done.
Okay.
But thank you.
He got her in tears.
We'll, we'll find you about that.
She's starting to.
Okay. And then, just quickly, I failed to mention that tomorrow I will be attending the state land board meeting, uh, down in Pueblo.
It's at seven forty-five.
Seven forty-five, yep. And then I'll leave from there and go straight to Upper Ark, and then leave there and come back for Conservation District. And we'll leave tomorrow. So, busy day tomorrow for me, but I meant to tell you that. Um. Public comment. Sheriff Bailey. Go ahead, sir. While we're waiting on it. You're up.
So just wanna let you guys know, we did get notified yesterday, the JAG grant, the JAG grant that we put in for, uh, the radio system. So we got, they haven't told us how much we were awarded, but we know we were awarded over fifty percent of what we requested, which was a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So we know it's a base sixty-two five. I'm sorry.
Were you sort of expecting that, or did you think it?
No, no, we were hopeful. Um, um, Under Sheriff Barr and Sergeant Wenzel went to, um, Denver last week to, um, present our case to the, um, the committee. And, uh, like I said, we got it yesterday, so we don't know what that number is yet. We know it's over sixty-two five. Um, so that'll be, that'll be a big impact on, uh, purchasing radios. Um. Oh, man. So I just went blank. So there's that. Uh, I just wanna let you guys know that we did get that. Now that, those monies won't be available until January first of twenty twenty, but we'll have a plan in place, uh, to replace, you know, thirty radios, maybe, um, with that. Uh, so that's good news on that. And there was something else, I was gonna. Oh, also, um, so we have the new Conex. You've probably seen that, uh, yellow, ugly yellow thing, sector over there now. Um, we'll be working with Road and Bridge to get that set in place. Um, we, uh, got some trusses already. We're gonna have to build a few more to make, for the length of it, to put, to span between the two Conexes, so we'll have that spot in between them to store, um, items as well. Uh, we're gonna start working on that this afternoon. The truss is just got, um, Mike brought the trusses up, uh, this morning. We'll get those unloaded and stuff, but wanna let you know, and then we will, once, once we have the Conexes in place and everything, then we will get them painted, so they won't be such a nice sore.
Quick comment.
And that's all funded through the marijuana grant, uh, that we, that we got, so.
You know, paint it green.
No, we're gonna paint it the same color as the building. We're pretty close.
So if I may, I, Mike and I talked, and I offered to bring my portable welder in if we need to weld brackets to bolt those trusses to. That offer's still on the table.
Okay, great.
And secondly, I, uh, spoke with Mr. Hyde about grading that area, not including the Conexes, but more than the Conexes, because we had talked about some drainage issues, obviously, the whole roller coaster thing there, and both, uh, search and rescue. So hopefully, when that happens, when you come to do the Conexes, maybe you could just mention, Commissioner Flower said that there's a chance we could get some grading done. Can we do that at the same time? Which he said he would.
Okay.
But just, I'm telling you so that you can follow up.
Cause we're starting to get up to, because of the fencing that's gonna be installed, uh, which is also grant funded as well. Um, so you know, the only reason the fencing isn't even in right, isn't in right now is because we're waiting on the tower, the AT&T to get that tower that's supposed to be done, right? We were initially told by the first of June, and they have.
Yeah, and you know, I thought about that.
But I think it'll come up quick, once they get rolling here now.
I thought about that, too, is maybe we put a stake in the ground and say, this is where the corner of your tower fencing is going to be. We've waited and waited. So I can communicate that to them if we need to.
Yeah, I mean.
Because the exact location, the GPS coordinates certainly haven't been shared with us.
Right, and I mean, we were told June one, that they would be done.
And they just had a.
And they know we're waiting to, so we can put a, your tire fence in.
Ten feet one way or the other.
So I'm wondering if, if you're getting frustrated at, maybe we build our fence and they, they locate accordingly, but I don't know that.
Could do that as well, sir.
Now, the Conex building, we'll call it from now on, is gonna be inside the fencing, correct?
Yes, yes. So that new yellow one, that is one hundred percent solely for evidence only. So it'll be locked only, well, to only two people in my office will have access to a key to open that, and that'll be the evidence custodian, and then the under sheriff keeps an extra key in his office, underlocked and key.
Now, you're gonna do overhead doors?
No.
In the breezeway portion, or you just leave it open for?
It's gonna be open. Yeah, one end will be.
The other end.
The back end will be closed off, so the wind doesn't howl through there.
What distance are you talking about? Between the two Conexes?
It'll be nineteen feet between the two Conexes, and then the trusses are big enough to cover both Conexes, so they'll be real over both.
Exactly.
You'll put your car in there?
No, not mine, but I have one of our, our trailer, or one of those type things. Or if we have a, if we have a vehicle that we, you know, is involved in a crime, and we're trying to protect it, we'll park it under there so the rain doesn't affect it.
Yeah.
Um, and then we're gonna, one of the reasons we wanted to cover those Conexes as well is so we can do some solar powered lighting in the Conexes, because when you're trying to get in there, sometimes it's dark or cloudy. It's kind of, it's tough to see in the back of it, so we're gonna just do some solar stuff, so we don't have to run electricity out there.
You gonna have a camera on it?
I had thought about it, but, but because our cameras are around the building.
I asked you to give up any security issues by saying yes or no. Just a thought.
Yeah.
Drop the question.
Gotcha.
Do we need to get some traction on a hood in the kitchen? Is that an issue over there?
Do you wanna spend that kind of money on it, on that building?
It's gonna be a while before a new building gets up.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, we could have that discussion, and, but I think that's more than a five minute discussion.
Yeah.
I mean, we could, we could look into
I mean, we're.
Cost.
There are a lot of restrictions over there. Height of the ceiling, that normally in a normal kitchen hood, you'd say, I'll put it in, but here, it's not gonna be the same deal.
Right.
Most likely be an invent.
Right. Or maybe, yeah, we, or maybe, because one, uh, one question that's brought up to me by my deputies has been, so you know, they're at the back door, that telephone pole that goes up, that, that held the alarm system. So, you know, several years ago, um, before my time, it had a major, uh, structural crack in it, and they came in and put those metal
Brackets.
But, and I've seen it too now, the wind blows a little bit, that telephone pole, man, it's moving around a lot, and I don't know if there's a point where we're gonna, we need to get rid of that thing.
Does it have the horns on it?
Uh huh.
And do we use those?
No.
No.
Uh, now, if we had some major catastrophe, we might. It's, they're still operable, but we do not use those anymore.
They could go onto the tower.
And, and I, and I think our office is beloved by the town that we don't use it anymore.
Yeah, it used to be pretty wild.
Every time there's a fire call, the whistle went off.
Oh, it used to be.
We were in court one day.
Probably don't need it.
Judge was sentencing a guy, and the alarm went off, so everybody in the court has to stop. Judge looked at me, and he says, what is that? And I said, that alarm goes every time you sentence somebody.
So we could look at removing the horns and getting that type pole out. Nothing else is on it.
We could even move the horns over to the, uh, to the radio tower, right, you know, twenty-five feet away, so.
We'll look into that.
Okay.
We'll look into that. Anything else, sir?
Probably.
Yeah, it'll hit you at lunch, huh?
Yeah.
Oh, speaking of, I wonder whose turn it is. Any further public comment? Yes, ma'am.
There are small birds out here with ticket signs.
Yeah. Thank you. I'll make a, let me make a note of that.
Has Brad Huff fixed that light out here?
No, he's, he had asked us, I asked him about it, and he said, well, you probably should go to Dark Skies about that. And then I asked Chris about that. He retrieved the hood, he found it. And then I thought Brad said to me, either he asked you about it?
Yeah.
As Dark Skies?
Yeah, we said we'd pay for it. Brenda, I mean, I talked to Brenda about that. The last I'd heard, that he had ordered whatever he needed.
Okay.
But it.
And I don't think that's the case. I think he was waiting for direction. I will tell him, if that's okay with your organization.
To go ahead and fix whatever needs to be.
You don't normally order those, so you get what you want, as Dark Skies?
No, he knows. I mean, he's just gonna replace what's already there.
Okay. So we're okay, as far as Dark Skies goes?
Just tell him to go ahead and do it.
I'll do that. Thank you.
Um, well, we are doing the senior barbecue for, our senior cookout for the high schoolers today.
Sheriff's Department?
Yeah, sheriff's offices at, uh, I think we start serving the kids at twelve forty. It's when they're, when they're out for lunch, but if you wanted to stop over there, you could.
Definitely.
Where, where, where's it gonna be? What, what part?
Right there in front of the school. You'll see us when you come down the, where the school buses, where the, the big roundabout is for the school buses, and they're by the, right outside the gymnasium, uh, doors, uh, east.
On the south.
On the east gym.
On the south, up by the east gym.
Oh, you're on the east gym.
Cause that was blocked off, parking and stuff.
Okay.
Yeah, at least that's. Yeah, at least that's where, um, that's where we've always done it.
Not down here on the west end, up there, okay?
Yeah, on the east end, on the high school side.
Good.
Yeah.
Good, good.
If you want to stop over there, you could.
Yep, we'll do it. All right, thank you. Anything else for the good of the order, public comment?
Okay, I had one.
Yeah, there's something in there.
You got it, come on.
That's fifteen years.
Did anything, gentlemen?